Item C, adopt resolution authorizing city manager to execute memorandum of understanding between the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board and the City of San Bruno for the San Bruno grade separation project. Staff?
My recommendation, my recommendation tonight for your consideration is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute the memorandum of understanding between the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board and the City of San Bruno. The history of this MOU and the project, the recent history, I will not go back years in the history of the project knowing that you had before you this item was in, in August, Caltrain made a presentation for the project kickoff. On September, this item was also before you and you approved ACIP project for, for the grade separation project and you allocated funding for staff support and consultant support to work in the development of this project. In September, also this item was before you to give direction to step on basic structural design element of this project. The purpose of the MOU what you have before you tonight is in essence to memorialize the party's joint commitment to cooperate for the development of this project and to pursue the design and construction. And also the intent of the MOU to specify the duties and responsibilities of both parties as this project continues to develop. In essence, the purpose of this MOU to establish a policy framework, how the development of this project will happen in during the design phase and during the construction phase. What this MOU is not intended to do to specify all of the design elements of, and agreement on all of the design elements of this project. I will take you through a few, I will highlight, highlight just a few items of interest from the MOU. What the city agrees to entering in this MOU, to, the city will agree to the main structural elements of design was included in the 65% project, design. JPB also acknowledge several unresolved scope issues in this 65%, 65% design, including architectural feature at PosiPark, architectural design of the new station, the aesthetics and surface treatment of the retaining wall system, utility relocations and landscaping will be resolved as part of the final design. It is explicitly understood that the project shall include all agreed on design elements by the SAS if technically feasible. JPB acknowledge that the city desire to limit construction of the San Bruno grade separation to one continuous period of construction, but that really mean that as, as you remember from the reason why I am expanding a little bit on this point that based on some comments what I received during the last few days, as you recall from the project sequence presentation, this project is intended to be developed in two construction phases based on two different construction contract and will be a decision point what JPB will have to make for, for the second phase of this project depending on the decision on the high speed rail. And this is a statement that the city is interested in on time construction, that basically finishing the project for four tracks instead of finishing for two tracks and coming back later for, for the next two tracks. JPB and the city commit to conclude discussion of unresolved issues in a timely manner. JPB will seek city's review of the design and will incorporate those comments by, by the city into the final design that if they are feasible. JPB will keep city informed of progress of construction and will coordinate public outreach with the city. They will designate a point of contact and the city will do the same. JPB and city shall develop a process to allow city to monitor any change, changes to the element of specific interest to the city, provided that JPB shall not be constrained in meeting its construction schedule and avoiding contract claims. The city and JPB shall enter in a construction and maintenance agreement which is not available at this time yet. These are only just highlights what of this MOU of more interest to the city, but they are not intended to encompass all of the issues included in the MOU. My recommendation tonight is for you to consider to authorize the city manager to finalize and to enter in this MOU what is before you. If you have any question.
Questions of staff at this point?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a few additional comments? Just wanted to elaborate and to reemphasize a couple of things that the director indicated in her report and to acknowledge the fact that there have been some number of comments and questions from the public as this item has moved forward for your consideration tonight. First and foremost, I want to emphasize that the, this is a project that has come onto an accelerated schedule, city council is aware of that, and it represents a long expected and anticipated delivery of, of interest to the community. The JPB has, on a regular and continuous basis, provided a very collaborative, very cooperative and very proactive relationship with staff in working through a myriad of design details. We fully expect that both the need for that type of work and the cooperative spirit and fact that has guided that work to date, we have every expectation that that will continue through the complete design and development of this project. With that said, I, and without disregarding, fully acknowledging that again, there are many issues that are not nailed down at this time, but they are also not specifically articulated in this MOU. And for clarification purposes and just to reemphasize something that the director said, it is not the purpose or our expectation, nor should it be your expectation, that an MOU of this general nature, which is intended to situate the relationship between the parties and to clarify the intent on a going forward basis, as has been the case, for a cooperative working relationship, that the purpose of this MOU is, is, is not to provide response or certainty on most, if, if, if not any of the design details that will be worked as this process moves forward. That said, you, you, there are some wording changes to the MOU at, as, as it has been included in the packet that are recommended for wordsmithing, if you will. And so you have essentially a couple of options tonight if the council is in agreement with the basic concept and content of the MOU. And that is, as the director is recommending, to allow me to finalize those wording changes that do, would not and are not expected to change the basic content of the agreement or to ask for that to come back to the city council at a subsequent meeting. I think the director's recommendation is clear and I just wanted to make sure that the council is, is fully informed that this document does not deliberately overlook that there are numerous interests and items of, on a day by day basis to resolve and to troubleshoot and to make sure that this project is what we expect as it moves forward to completion.
To the chair.
Councilmember Ibarra.
I appreciate that statement, but I'm still concerned because there's two statements in this draft MOU that seem to contradict each other. And that's during this, in the description of the scope of the project and very simply states that the details of the project are more specifically described in the JPB's 65% design drawings dated August 28, 2009. And then it goes two paragraphs later that the JPB acknowledges that there are several unresolved scope issues in the 65%. So one, you're saying you've got specific details of the project and then not, and then another statement was, you know, we're, we're, we're expected to accept that there's still unresolved issues. So I think we're going to get in a bind if, you know, if we start using now, you know, those statements. I, I don't like to hear the details of the, of more, you know, I don't like words that like specific, you know, and then several unresolved, I mean, there just seems to be a contradiction there. And I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the whole MOU and the whole relationship and, you know, and that, that setup and everything, but I know that there's a lot of concerns, not only with my colleague on the subcommittee, but also with the former members of the CAC and the greater community, that there are details that we are still undoubtedly probably going to have to argue and, and fight for.
Councilmember Ibarra, based how the city manager already mentioned that certainly this is still said draft MOU is open to some final words changes. Based on those concern, what I heard from the community and what the city manager heard from the community, even today on page three, there were three other changes made to this draft to further address those concern and even your, your quote, quote on page three which said to accept the 65% design specifically says now in this latest version incorporating the structural element of the 65% design. That basically this MOU clearly emphasized the fact that what the city really accept the major structural element of that 65% design and certainly no 65% design can provide all of the details and that's why further the MOU at least intends to clarify that there are many, many elements which are still part of the final design phase and those will be clarified and in collaboration with JPB, those will be addressed, how they are listed, those architectural issue, wall design, wall treatment, the PosiPark and utility relocation. There are still many outstanding issues on this project which were not agreed to at this stage based on the very fast space, pace, how the development of this design is taking place right now. Yeah.
Any other comments, members of public affairs?
Robert Rico, 7th Avenue. I gave the council and Mark Simon a copy of, of some of my concerns, but I'm just going to touch on two because I don't want to nitpick. What, what part of the, will the original CAC play to assure that their original recommendations are met? They talk about, they, the original CAC recommendations will be considered, but is there any community input to, from that group going forward or whatever they have turned in is where it is and there, will there be any, any follow through? My, my bigger question is, and I think Clara showed in, in one of the slides, the, the JPB and the city agree that certain design elements as presented by the CAC will be included if technically feasible, but there's a second reference in the staff package that says technically feasible or financially feasible. And I think when they put that financially feasible in there, one of the scenarios is the JPB is going to come back and say, we've only got so much money, it is technically feasible to do this, but the city of San Bruno cannot say, you've got to spend your money on this. The JPB is going to say, we would love to do this, but there's not the money. So I'm, I'm just concerned that that's going to be used as a scapegoat and say, the recommendations, whatever they are, how the water is pumped from the depressions of Sematell Avenue or San Bruno Avenue or Angus back into the storm drain systems, there, there's not money to, to do it the way maybe that it should be done or, or the CAC suggested it be done. I, I guess I would like some clarification maybe from JPB on, are they going to, how are they going to weigh technically feasible and financially feasible when they make these kinds of decisions?
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to address the council on this issue?
Good evening, I'm Mark Simon, executive officer for Public Affairs for Caltrain. First of all, let me just congratulate Mr. Wayne and congratulate Larry Franzella on a remarkable turn. Thank you for all of your service. And Jim, thank you for all the service you're going to provide. The Caltrain staff concurs with the recommendation of the city staff and urges the board to, the council, excuse me, I speak before boards all the time, urges the council to approve the resolution as it's described by your staff. We have been working and we appreciate city manager Jackson's description of our relationship. We subscribe entirely to her characterization. We work very, very hard to work very, very fast. Mr. Ibarra, I think it's significant, this is for 65% design, there's still, I don't think it was ever intended to be something you would bring to you at 100% design. I think that would be inappropriate to bring you essentially a done deal. Most of the things that we have to work out are not dissimilar from issues we've already worked out, sometimes on very short timeframe, as Ms. Frabry described, there was one we resolved today and it is in our interest to resolve these issues as quickly as possible as we're currently spending a million dollars a week on this project, public taxpayers' money. I know the city staff is also spending significant resources. The word scope always throws me off because it sounds in our mind, I think it's, I don't think it's bigger in that sense. I think we're talking about things like, we, first of all, we've already agreed to a water feature, we've already agreed to the elevators, I know those were two issues that were of significant importance to the council, but we're talking about in some cases aesthetics, some cases sort of the practical considerations of how you move utilities and how you move water pipes. We're confident all this can be resolved and we urge the council to approve this resolution. Thanks.
Before you leave, could I get you to just maybe address Mr. Rico's question on how you're going to weigh technically feasible versus financially feasible and, and the role you see in the CAC?
Well, he's correct. I mean, one of the issues it is of issue, and it came up the last time I appeared for this council when there was a proposal to really significantly change the design, the cost of the project is an issue for us. It is not a small issue and we only have a certain amount of money, so there's no question that will be one of the factors. And whether it's technically feasible is one of the issues that we continue to address with the city staff and there are times when they'll convince us that something is more feasible than we thought it was. These are all things that are subject to negotiation. As for the role of the CAC, I really think that's up to the council and staff to decide. Certainly there's no question that the CAC had extensive, almost unprecedented participation in this experience and this design from the outset. We have adopted virtually all of their recommendations and I believe it's really the responsibility of the city staff and the council to make sure that these things are followed through on. In my experience preparing for, for this council is, you don't need me to tell you what those responsibilities are, you're very mindful of them and you've been very aware of the need to fulfill them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice Barnes, 5th Avenue, Honorable Mayor, council members. Boy, did you just hear him say, quote, "our best interest," and he did mean the Joint Powers Board Caltrain. He did not mean the city council's best interest or San Bruno's. And he also made a misstatement in when he said that the recommendations that were made by the CAC have been incorporated in the 65%. I sent you folks a letter last night with 13 points where they are not living up to the CAC. I'll give you one real quick example here. We wanted 750-foot-long platforms. On First Avenue, that's going to stick out atop a 20-foot wall at the curb for four tracks. It's going to stick out over First Avenue, 10 feet, and suddenly in this 65%, they have added a future possibility of 250 more feet. That means every house except one on First Avenue from Pine North will be looking across the, may look across the street at a 20-foot wall with a 10-foot overhand. Now, I brought that to the city's attention and they went back and they were told it's an error. Did you get any guarantee or warm and fuzzy feeling from the previous speaker that they're going to put that in writing, that that's an error and you will never see those 250 feet? No. And a lot of these unresolved issues are not being put in writing. And if we sign this MOU based on a seriously flawed project design, we will be buying into it and we won't have a say in inspections or wall or landscaping. I truly believe they will be collaborative like our city manager said. I believe that we're going to negotiate like Mark Simon said. Did you just hear how many trees we're going to have on First Avenue? There's not a damn tree from Angus south on First Avenue. And the reason is, I, I better quit, but I do-
Don't leave us hanging without the reason.
I'm sorry. I did hear you. The problem with the plan is we on the CAC were going for a four-track footprint and then they came back to us years ago and said, we're going to do two tracks. Now their back is up against the wall and they need that $10 million. So we're being rushed. And what the engineers have done in the project design is they've put a two-track in with all kinds of accoutrements that are over on that other side, the First Avenue side. And they're telling us we're going to have a Phase Two for four tracks. Well, to go from two to four tracks, they will have to demolish millions of dollars of enhancements, as structural, at whatever. They will have to demolish that and then build a four-track. Folks, they, if they lose the $10 million, I'm sorry, but you taxpayers and I taxpayer are going to save more than $10 million in not doing these things and not tearing them down. I'm sorry, but I am adamantly opposed to this and I respectfully ask you to at least postpone approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue? Council discussion?
I'd like a few comments.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Thank you. I think first of all, after the last comments, I think we need some clarification on exactly what is happening because my understanding is it's going to be a, one complete construction phase and that after everything is built, there will be room to add two more tracks. My understanding is not that they are going to build something with two tracks and then come back, tear things down and add a second set of tracks. So could we please clarify that by whoever wants to?
Go ahead.
My name is Rob Vole and I'm the project manager with JPB. So in answer to your question, this council member, we are building two tracks in one construction project and then the second two tracks would be contemplated in our second construction project.
Okay, before you, wait a second. Before you, before you continue, is the platform itself, the structure itself wide enough, the, the structure that you're going to build initially wide enough to accommodate four tracks?
At no point will we build a platform that's two tracks that will be demolished, if that's your question. And the reason I answer it that way-
That really wasn't my question. That's an answer to a question.
Okay, well, I'm trying to answer the question. The question is, we will build two tracks, okay? We'll have an option which will be to complete a two-track wide station or we will issue a second contract which is for building the remaining two tracks. So one or the other will occur in 2012.
I'm sorry, you've confused me even more.
And I don't think your question was answered, Jim.
Yeah, let me add, the idea here is that by the time we're in the position where we have to make this decision, we will know whether high speed rail is coming or not. If it doesn't come, then we shouldn't build four tracks. We don't know yet. We don't have the money, we'd rather if we're going to build the second set of tracks that high speed rail pay for it, not us. So we're designing a two-track structure that can be expanded to four tracks, but it will not at the, the outset be a four-track structure.
So with, with expanding it, let me just take it, so you build half of it and you're going to build the other two and you come and just put it right next to it and now you've got four?
That's, that's the essential engineering premise, yes. We're not, we're not going to tear down a whole bunch of other stuff. That's the idea is to build it so that it can accommodate four tracks.
Okay, then may I continue?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, it's funny, the speakers over here- You know, it's funny, the speaker's over here, so I keep looking over.
The camera's picking you up, don't worry about it. So therefore, I've been looking at the design, the 65% design documents, and for anyone who hasn't seen them, it's a pile of documents this thick and this big, and the print on it is small, it's not a 12, it has to be a 10 font, it's small. So it takes a while to dig it all out and try to figure out what's going on. So first of all, I applaud the community, the CAC group that did a lot of this work, and Alice, I know you've, and Robert, you've done a lot of the work of trying to look at these plans and figuring out exactly what it means. I think the concerns are what Ms. Barnes said they were. We don't want anyone coming through our town, doing a huge construction project, two tracks, four tracks, whatever, and then coming back later and tearing part of it apart and adding more to it. So that's a concern, and we'd like to hear from you emphatically that that is not going to happen.
That is not going to happen.
Okay, so that, make sure that's on the public record. Secondly, I understand the 65% planning, I understand that you can and cannot do certain things right now because there's other decisions that are being made. I'm a new member of the High-Speed Rail Policy Committee, there's all things happening with that, and I understand that there's steps, that you can't step on each other's toes, and there's phases to do, okay? However, my, one of my big concerns, besides the fact that, I'm deeply concerned about how the storm drain water's going to be moved back and forth, my parents live right down there. I also want to know that any engineering decisions that are being made now, and up to the 100%, will not preclude any aesthetics that were promised and landscaping that was promised for First Avenue on the east side. And part of how I read the plans is, there's a lot of wonderful-looking things on the west side of the tracks and the stations, there's the fountains and the this and the that. But I've noticed that there's nothing much printed on the east side. And also, it doesn't look like there was any consideration, and I could be wrong because I haven't been studying the plans all that long, any consideration to moving, shifting the whole thing over five feet and allowing for the landscaping on the east side of First Avenue. And I know when I say that, it sounds really simple to do, but I realize it isn't. But I'd like some assurance from you that the considerations will be made to keep First Avenue as whole as possible. Those people live, their front room is here, the tracks are there, and they have traffic in front of them. It's a very difficult place to live, and they have no, it'd be difficult to sell your house, it'd be difficult to move somewhere else. So those are kinds of the things I'm looking for.
Okay, well, let me answer the question about the five feet first, because that one's an easy one for me. We did look at that early on. It is not technically viable to get all four tracks by shifting everything to the west. But we did look at all possible alternatives to shifting it, so that wasn't viable. In regards to planting or to any kind of treatment along First Avenue, that's actually one of the issues that we're working very closely with the city right now on. The city has specifically brought up that issue as being one of the items they're interested in, is possibly incorporating some trees or some other kind of planting along there. It's specifically excluded in the MOU, not because this is something we're not agreeing with the city on, rather it's because at 65, we didn't want to present a fait accompli, this is what we're going to do, you know, love it or leave it. Quite the opposite, we're working with the city, you've obtained a consultant, we're working with that consultant and with the staff to develop exactly what that's going to look like. So we're well aware that that's a concern the city has, and that's something that we're going to take into account to the 95%.
I understand all those things, and it's hard to reconcile what you just said to some of the plans that I saw that show a three-dimensional drawing of the trash can that's going to go on the station. So I'll take your answer for what it is, but I really hope that you don't come back and tell us that there's not going to be landscaping on the First Avenue.
I understand your concerns. Don't confuse rendering with a final design.
Okay.
You know, there's a lot to be done still, that's the whole point of this MOU. It's really a structure for us to go forward. It's no different than the decision you made, I think it was back August 29th, according to the slide. This is essentially memorializing that decision. We've already made some significant strides since then to get to 65%. And it's our, it's in our interest, I'm assuming that it's okay for us to have an interest as well, but I think in this case, it's an interest we share with you, which is to get this done, to get it done in a way that's meaningful and appropriate for the city and for us. And that's our intent. And that's why there's still issues to be resolved. Based on our history so far, we're very confident these are going to be resolved and that we're not going to win them all either, to be honest with you.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. In general, the MOU is fine. I understand completely that you don't have all the answers now. But I guess a lot of this has, for me, to do with a matter of trust. And you came to us a number of years ago, and we talked to you about deaths occurring at that site. What are we going to do? And I think you were actually, based on prior experience with this, prior councils, you were actually very happy that we were willing to work with you. And we started the CAC process, long, laborious, hard, fun process, and I have to congratulate Robert and Alice for being a very integral part of that whole operation. And we came together and worked with you and developed what we thought was going to be a real first-class, you know, process. And now we have high-speed rail thrown into the mix. And I understand completely that you don't have the answers to fill in the blanks at this point in time. But I think a lot of it has to do with trust, and given the fact that if you wanted a number of years ago, you could have said, "We're coming through, see you later, it's concrete, and this is what you have." So given the fact that you were coming here a number of times asking for our advice, asking for us to get on board, if you will, and trying to make this happen in a cooperative way, I do in fact think it'll all work out. I don't think we're going to get every little tiny thing that we would want on the wish list, but we have assurances in elevators, we have assurances on a lot of the things that were sort of in question even just a few months ago. So I just want to bring that up.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know that was a similar concern expressed by Councilmember Medina the last time I was here. And it is an issue of trust, and it works both ways. We're trusting that we can work these issues out in a way that allows this project to go forward in a timely way. The thing that we're very nervous about is the same tight timeframe that's troubling to everybody. So we're taking it on trust that there isn't going to be a month of delay in finalizing this agreement, that it's going to be done in a timely way. There's no reason to doubt that that's not going to be the case. There's no reason to doubt that won't be the case, I was right.
Right, well, some of the real issues, you know, and they've talked about this drainage issue, we used to have a lot of flooding downtown and on the east side of town, and there's some real issues of how this water's going to get from one side to the other.
Absolutely.
And I want to make sure that that's addressed properly, because you're going to dig a big hole once, and we don't have to do any more of it.
Through the chair.
If I can just, since it really relates to the last two colleagues speaking, and what really, I think what concerns us all is that we did place within this MOU specific language about maintaining the elevator, maintaining the fountains and things. I think we needed to go a little step further, because we have members of the public that were part of the CAC that, you know, that know that we have major discussions on treatments on the east side, on First, along First Avenue. And knowing, obviously, if that's not part of the 65, neither are elevators or fountains. So quite possibly, and I'm probably directing this to staffels, maybe we need to put, you know, we need to go over some of that stuff from the PSR and, you know, and see what may, you know, to at least pacify us that these things will not be lost in the final design, that they go within the MOU, along with, you know, the drainage issues. So I mean, I think, we had no problem placing the elevator issue or the fountains issue or anything within this MOU, even though they're well past 65%. But I think we need to also address some of the other treatments that we worked very hard to address, along with the JPB.
I think that's our intent, I think that's the intention going forward from the MOU.
But they're memorialized in this document.
Well, they, I think they were issues that were raised because the council made a specific issue of those things. You know, what you're telling me is that we put them in, we didn't have to. I think that's a demonstration of our intent on going forward in a cooperative, collaborative way.
Through the chair. I'm just, obviously, there are changes that have been made, there are questions that have been raised, there's things that should be placed in the MOU. Trust is an important thing, but there's a, obviously, former president said, "Trust but verify." Why would we not want to postpone the MOU for two weeks to allow some of the modifications and updates to it so that it's all presented before us in its entirety, rather than going forward with some of the changes that already have occurred, that I guess we're not seeing here? I'm trying to understand, what would be the benefit for the council and the community to go forward this night, or what will it do to us if we have to come back on November 24th with all, as you call it, the changes, the word changes, et cetera? I'm looking for an answer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. From-
Well, I was just going to say, I've already given you the option of either that or doing it tonight. I think your question is more properly directed to the JPB. I mean, that's-
I think the city manager's yield the floor to you.
So it appears, yes. We're just worried about the timeframe. Two more weeks, and then is it going to be two more weeks after that? And at what point does it get to the point where we can't do this? One of the elements of our discussion prior to tonight's resolution was a commitment from the city that this was not going to take a couple of more weeks. We're spending a million dollars a week. If we're not going to get these things done and done quickly, then we have to ask, and I hate to say this, because I don't want to put the council, you know, I don't want to seem like I'm putting the council in this kind of a position, but it's the position we're in, that if we don't move forward on this, then there's some question about whether or not we can get this done in a way that meets the deadlines we have and that meets the requirements that we need to meet.
And I appreciate what you've said, so if the council were to give you, or I gave you my word and say, "Trust us," that in two weeks when you came back, that we would feel that everything would be fine to approve, is that timeframe of the two weeks is still of a considerable challenge and a problem for the current project?
It's a concern. I mean, we're talking, we're trying, we're talking to the city about days, not weeks, to try and get this MOU resolved and the remaining issues that we have to get to get this thing signed, resolved. That leaves still other issues that we will continue to work on. But it is troubling to us that we're not able to get moving on this, and we've been working very hard already.
Excuse me. Through the chair.
Yes, Larry.
Thank you. I understand the point of the two more weeks, but they've made very public statements, and we have it on record, and I know we'll have it in the minutes, that they're asking us to trust them, they're asking us to work with them. We've had people listening very closely, all the councils listening. We can, and if I'm understanding right, we can add things tonight to change this if we need to, or we can add a line saying, including the considerations that were voiced tonight, or let that be part of the minutes and just move on. I don't, I didn't make my comments with the intention of delaying things, I only made my comments to make public and to assure people that you are working with us, we're working with you, and that those things weren't swept under the rug and forgotten. It's a very small part of our town, I realize that, but they are part of our town, and they've carried the blunt of a lot of construction through Barton, other things that, that part needed to be considered. So I understand all the things both of you have said, but I don't know if that's necessary to delay for two weeks.
Through the chair. I agree with Councilwoman O'Connell. Two weeks is going to bring up more questions, more, I mean, if you're working internally with staff on a daily basis for some of the very issues we've talked about tonight, I really don't have a problem.
I was just going to mention that, or say that I think staff has a real good idea of what the CAC wants, what has been done, what the concerns are, and the reports that have come back aren't surprising that the JPB has been very cooperative and working diligently to get things done. And yes, I understand that you have an interest, and so I know that you understand that we also have an interest, and you're going to have to hit some kind of medium ground. Everyone's not going to get everything that they want, but I think it is a real time constraint that's been placed on them because of the funding that's there. And I don't think that we have any problem, or at least I don't have any problem, giving the city manager authority to enter into the MOU, making those necessary changes. And if she can't get those changes made, then we'll see in two weeks, okay? I mean, and if you don't want to be here in two weeks, work a little bit later and get her more satisfied and get a signature quicker is kind of what it amounts to. And I can understand not wanting to stretch that out, because it just kind of stretches it out, and it's at a million dollars a week, not anything anyone wants to spend, so.
Through the chair.
Councilmember Medina.
I can appreciate what is being said, maybe that's why you're the mayor, of course. Is, I understand your situation, but we have our situation, we're not going to get everything we want, and it's going to work both ways, and we understand that. We spoke before, and obviously, actions speak louder than words. I can go along with what the mayor is saying, is that we could enter into the agreement with those changes and modifications made to the MOU by the manager, and if it doesn't meet the expectations and what you've heard here this evening, then I would agree, you're back in two weeks. And I think then the trust factor will really be tested on both sides.
I understand what you're saying, you know, I want to echo again my appreciation for what your city manager said about working with us. We feel the same way, and there's an extra element you should know of, they are very, very good at representing your interests. Very good.
And I don't want to downplay that I don't believe exactly what staff has said about the cooperation and the communication and the diligence of what they have been doing. So I don't want to downplay that with yourself and with the staff.
I understand, I don't think we interpreted it that way.
Okay. There are actions from the council to introduce the resolution with the, giving the manager authorization to execute with those changes.
Through the chair, I'd like to introduce that resolution for adoption.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Franzella.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Hopefully, we don't see you next week and, or in two weeks.